The 3rd, I mean August, oh, I'm looking at the minutes. No, that says agenda. Okay, so August the 3rd, and it is 6:32. And, oh, first I have to call the roll call. Mayor Proton Villanueva, Councilman Sam Clinton.
Here.
Councilman Bunker.
Here.
Councilman McClabb.
Here.
Shell Allen.
Here.
Okay, and if we could now stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor to take this flag.
I pledge allegiance to the text. One nation under God, one indivisible.
And if you could remain standing, please, and I'll do the invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord God, we just thank you for this wonderful city, and Lord God, we just thank you for this wonderful country. And we just ask that you give us the grace to lead and to the knowledge and the wisdom and the discernment to lead this city in the way that you would have us to lead. Lord God, we do lift up our, our police chief tonight as he's dealing with a family emergency. Lord God, we just pray that you keep your hand upon him and his family. And as we go forward, Lord, we just pray for your continued blessing upon our city in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. You're on my line. That's why I'm having trouble. I was looking for the right page.
July. Do you know how here? This one is yours, because I already have all this. Here. I don't know how I end up with that.
Well, I thought it was the other.
But that'd be two.
Okay, are there any public comments somewhere? And we didn't receive any email by noon, so we're good to go. So for the mayor's report, we have been concerned about the uptick in the COVID. And last Friday, the police chief and I discussed it, and he went and talked to the, to Hector, what's Hector's last name?
Rengel.
Rengel from the county to see what the county was going to do. And so far, they have decided they're going to follow the governor's orders from last, I guess it was about May, when he put out an order to lift the mask mandate. Now, we can, as a city, you know, do more if we want to. But so far, right now, I've just decided that we'll kind of leave things the way they are. So that's really what, and y'all could send me suggestions if you think we should do more. We did have a little scare in the office that we thought one person maybe had been exposed to COVID, but she tested negative, so we're, we're good to go. So let's see, we'll go on to the city administrator's report.
All right. Screens for those on Zoom. All right, so first off, I want to give you an update on where we're at with our code enforcement project, special project we're working on. As you know, that we've assigned one of our city staff to assist our chief of police and myself in enforcing codes. And so we've done initial reviews to identify potential compliance issue or violations. And so our initial review identified potentially 12 unsafe or substandard structures. That list will likely grow, probably not by a huge amount, but I could see that list getting up to about 14 or 16. Two potential violations for flood damage prevention ordinance, four violations for overgrown lots, and seven potential violations of junk nuisance vehicles. And so we're going to be working to, to correct those potential violations in the future.
Could you expand, expand slightly on the second item, two potential violations of that?
Yeah, so the, the two potential violations of the flood damage prevention ordinance are relating to structures located within the floodway or appear to be in the floodway that may not have received the proper permitting. Some of them are, are temporary structures, which, which creates a little bit of a unique wrinkle in how we interpret it. So we're looking into that one structure in particular. It's, it's of a size, a floor size, that requires a building permit. And under the building, if you're requiring a building permit, you should definitely get the elevations and everything else. So.
It's bigger than a shed.
It's bigger than, it's a, well, sheds of different sizes can, it's, I think the, off of memory, something about 144 square feet or so, or 120 square feet. About 10 by 12, 12 by 12, somewhere in that range is, is where you start running into building permits being required. And if you require a building permit, you sure as heck want to be required to comply with our flood damage prevention ordinance. So we're, we're investigating those and looking into those further.
Thank you.
To date, we've only begun action against one lot, an overgrown lot. That's, that's pretty bad. Hopefully, we'll, we'll get that remediated this week. That's something that we've, as we kind of go through this process, it's a little bit of a learning experience, getting familiar with the ordinance, getting familiar with the procedures that are involved that the ordinance lays out, and we'll, we'll have an opportunity to review that in detail tonight. Yeah.
Okay, we're going to do that tonight.
Yeah. It's on, it's one of our rolling reviews. We'll, we have it teed up for tonight. Requirements for providing notice, and then if, if that's not remediated, then going and doing it. This, in this case, I think we have a clear situation where there's an emergent need for the city to just go ahead and, you know, laterally correct the deficiency. And we should be able to get that cleared, passed through our legal department by the end of this week, so we can go on and go do good things. Yeah. Legal department of one. So that, hopefully, I'll get corrected soon. That's been on our list for a while. The others are of less emergent concern. For the buildings, our next steps on that are to coordinate with the engineer to do an assessment on whether that building is unsafe or, and how it qualifies for substandard structures. There, there are provisions within our ordinance on how to have a building deemed substandard, but there's other remedial actions that we can take, legal actions that we can take if they are unsafe in their current condition for habitation or, or other things, and basically look at getting a building condemned.
Are a majority of the buildings that are substandard in a floodway?
I'd have to look at that. There, there are at least three or four that are, if they're not in the floodway, they're really close to it. And so those would be the priority, right? Because you don't want those becoming, you know, further hazards for nearby property, other nearby properties. And, and it appears that these buildings that we've identified are unoccupied.
Oh, okay, I was going to ask that question.
Yeah.
They're not occupied, okay.
As far as we can tell, there might, there might be one where we, where we'll have to look into a little bit further, but the rest seem to be boarded up or should be boarded up. Once, once we have an engineering assessment done, yeah.
Before you do it, just be careful. So with his confidential and privileged, it needs to come through me, and I, I need to retain them.
Right.
As, as, as the city's attorney, so that it doesn't become.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, the process would be, we would work through Kent. Kent would do the referrals, but our team would coordinate that to make sure it happened. And then at that point, it'd be up to Kent to pursue the legal remedies according to that assessment findings. And then.
Real quick, and the reason I say that, so you understand, if a client, in this case, the client would be the city of Martindale, if a client has direct communications with an expert, those communications are discoverable by the party that is the subject of the legal action. If those communications are between the expert and me, those communications are not discovered. They're privileged and protected from the other party's signal.
Good background.
Yeah, that's good.
The other issues are overgrown lots and junk vehicles. Our intent is to just go ahead and work with our chief of police and our police department to issue violation citations on those property owners to, to correct the condition.
What's considered a junk vehicle?
We'll get into the definition later tonight. Basically, if it, if it is a non-operable vehicle and is not stored behind cover or, or in an enclosed area, then if it's got weeds growing through its tires, it's a junk. To kind of put a mental picture, there's a definition we'll get to later.
Okay.
That's, that's where we're at with the code enforcement stuff, so there's plenty of work to be done. Other item you don't see on this chart is hotel tax enforcement. That's coming up next. We wanted to get, get a jump on, on these items, and then we'll get into the hotel tax compliance issues as we talk. All right. If there's any questions, I'll continue on. The next update I have is on the park strategic plan. Working with one of our city employees, we've completed an extensive review of successful strategic plans for municipal park systems, Round Rock and, and a number of others. We probably looked at about six or seven different strategic plans. And some of them better than others, all of them good, from what we can tell. And they gave us a lot of insight on what data they, what data was important to those cities when they were developing their plan, and so we could help craft our data gathering requirements, you know, a little bit of a head start. So we're using something that, that people have done previously to, as we look to build survey questions and workshop materials and make sure that we're, we're thinking through everything.
So you are thinking about doing surveys?
Yes, we're, yeah, so we intend to, our data gathering will, will include a survey and structured workshop. Surveys available online or in print or pick up here at the, at the city. Or if anywhere else, if the cafe wants to have the, the survey locate, the printed copies, their library wants to have printed copies, they can put them there and return them to the city if they want to also. But we'll, we'll have a survey, and we're still working through, we're still finalizing what that survey questions will be. But what it tries to do is focus on, at a fairly high level, what are the desires in terms of amenities, what, what amenities are desired by people who would patron the park system? And then the structured workshop materials would, would mirror those survey questions to, to some degree, but where the survey is getting a single person's input, workshop is, is intended to be more collaborative so that the participants of the workshop can, you know, put their minds together and come up with possible other ideas. Sometimes you'll find that, often you'll find that conversation will strike ideas they might not have thought of otherwise if they were just going on a survey. So that's one of the reasons why I want to do that. We're working on a preliminary schedule, and you'll see that down below on the preliminary next steps. And we also continue to coordinate with our parks advisory committee as we're going forward, making sure that they're, they're involved and aware, and their input is being taken into consideration as we go through the planning to plan process and then getting into the kickoff portion. So where are we going from here? One of the things we'll need to do is determine our target, target audience for public input, and then we'll work with the parks advisory committee on that. The basic question is, do we want to, who, who are the people we want to attract to our park system? Those are the people we want to survey. So are those people, are we, want a municipal park that serves the needs of just the residents? That might be of a certain size and type of amenity. If it's a, a more, if it attracts other nearby areas or the county, then that would influence, you know, what type of size and things that we want to consider. So we'll work with the parks advisory committee to kind of narrow down our target audience so we know who, who we're getting, gathering data from, because that data is going to go into the analysis and provide some findings on the back end. We're also going to procure a survey software subscription, Survey Monkey or Qualtrics or something like that. Be below the purchasing threshold that I'm authorized to do, and it's well within the budget. Probably no more than a couple hundred dollars at the most, I would think. We'll, we'll finalize the branding and outreach strategy here in the next couple of weeks, and then we intend to launch the data gathering phase, launch the surveys, publish the workshop schedules around the first part of September. So here in the next month, we plan to start kicking this thing off. And then throughout the fall, we'll, we'll gather the data through the workshops and surveys, and during the winter, January and February, we'll be doing the analysis, reporting out to the advisory committee, parks advisory committee, and getting their input as we build the final strategic plan, which will hopefully be endorsed by the parks advisory committee, but ultimately brought, of course, city council. So sometime in the spring, so we're probably looking April on a frame for when this thing is going to be completed.
Well, if we do, if we do get a, some kind of a survey software, just make sure that we can use it for others besides just the parks.
Right.
I'd like to continue the survey we did for the civic thing.
So, so on that one, we use Qualtrics. Yeah, on this, on this strategic, envision Martindale strategic plan, we, we use Qualtrics. However, that was done for free, because it was done, that, that project, that data gathering process was part of a capstone project through my master's program. And so the university sponsored or provided that resource to us. In this case, we'll need to go out and get, they'll probably get, go with the Qualtrics again, Survey Monkey or something similar. But yes, we would, we could, along with that, publish that, that survey for the strategic plan, envision Martindale's strategic plan to get any, you know, other input.
Yeah.
Update reflection.
I think we need to get a lot of info from the people.
Yeah.
That's a good way to do it.
Definitely. The other thing that is kind of poking about with this is, depending on the target audience size, if we're, if we're looking at a county-sized park, surveying, surveying a county, we're not going to be able to do it with just publishing on our website, and we'd probably have to look at hiring a firm or something to cold call folks to see if we could get data.
Yeah.
That's, that's a little bit out there. The odds of that happening are probably, probably pretty small, but.
Eating the elephant in one bite.
It's a pretty big elephant to bite, but if we're going to go, if we're going to partner with the county or, or others to do a massive, a very large grant, having that, that type of input would really bolster that application. So then that's the consideration that we would have.
So don't you think, like, even with doing that, that the survey, is it going to be open to anybody in the county?
It would be, but we may not reach those people to, with it, you know. The survey, when we post it online, anybody can fill it out. You know, if you're visiting from California, fill out the survey.
Yeah.
Visit the park, how'd you like it? That's still a little bit of data that could be useful. But if we're trying to get, you know, what, what are the design, if, if the county, if members who live in the county want to come and enjoy the river in Martindale or any other lands that might turn into a park, what, what would their desires be? And how do we capture that? If we just posted it on our website, probably not going into traffic. We need to get the response rate that we'd really be able to draw a definitive conclusion.
But if we're using city monies for any of this, I think we need to stick with the citizens.
Right, or, or, or if we're working with the county, or if we're going to county-level survey, maybe we partner with the county on, on that as well, so.
Okay. Because from what I'm hearing, it sounds like you kind of want to go partner with the county anyway, if they were willing. And I mean, and like, rather than doing a survey only for Martindale, which later on, you'll probably have to do one for the county, is why not just do one for the county and the citizens? And, you know, you'll have.
The county's going to give us money, yes, definitely.
It would be for, they would use it for grants?
Yeah, we'd have, yeah, it's, it goes into what, who do we want the parks to serve? If it's going to serve the county, then make sure to bring the county in. If, if there's a desire to have it serve a, a smaller community, you know, Martindale, maybe the nearby regions, then that might be, look a little different, so.
Well.
That's what, that's what we'll have our parks advisory committee. Discuss and weigh in on and, and give us some direction on, unless city council wants to do that, then we'll take it.
Has there already been discussions with any, with material on partnering for the county?
There's been some I'm aware of. I know that some of the council members, I think, there might have had conversations. I know that it's been.
Just in, just in conversation, nothing, nothing in writing, just a.
Just to, and how, did he seem to like it?
Yeah, they were, they don't, Caldwell County does not have any park land on the river. So, you know, my, my, my whole point is, they're coming anyway. You know, and, and it's the best plan if we could have help from the county to help maintain and possibly help us for grants and that type of thing, because they're coming. They're coming from all over. Once the word gets out, you know, it's, they're coming from Kyle, Sam Marcus, everywhere. So it's going to get more and more as the population grows. Especially if this, these developments come in down the road, it'll be, it'll be a big issue. So it'd be good to have some, in my opinion, it'd have to be approved by council, but in my opinion, it'd be, it would be best to let the county help us with this. But it's just been a conversation. Well, couldn't we, like, say in the Lockhart paper or the other small paper that serves a lot of the smaller communities, have an article in there that says we're looking for input from the residents and then just do a brief description of, of what we're asking for, and then say, please respond to the Survey Monkey survey, blah, blah, blah. I mean, you would probably get at a very small cost to, to write a small ad. Miles, who's written a lot of things for us in the paper, you would at least get some.
They might run a story. They might, that deserves my, my choose in a story. I know when we were doing our vision Martindale, they, they ran a story. You know, I don't think it was front page, but.
Well, it's the little blur of the Guardian with the.
Yeah, yeah, I think we, we could get more of an.
That goes to the finalizing.
Yeah, that's, that's a time when, when, when that's on our agenda that we can start talking about something, I guess.
Any other, any questions on, you know, next steps and where we're going with this? All right. The last thing I want to do is get a quick review of where we're at with our budget and tax rate calendar. So the, there's a couple, there's, the budget and the tax rate have different notification requirements and timelines involved in terms of public notice when they're filed and such. We are a simplified, we follow simplified tax, tax rate notification procedures because our tax rate is less than 50 cents per hundred dollars, and our total revenue collected through property taxes is less than 500,000. So we get to, we, we get to avoid some of the more arduous notification requirements that are within the, the Texas law. However, we do have to still file our proposed budget 30 days before city council makes a tax levy. And we have to hold a public hearing, at least one public hearing, 15 days after the budget's filed, and that notice has to go out in a public, in a paper 10 days before the hearing. So this kind of sets us up in a collision course where my goal would be to have us have the budget adopted tax rate, tax levy established September 7th at a regular city council meeting. Just, just in case something.
August.
September, September 7th. Right after, right after Labor Day. Just in case something were, were to come up or to happen in the process. Gives us a couple of weeks on the back end of September to, if we needed to republish a tax notice or something because we wrote an ordinance wrong or what have you, we can, we have time to recover. That, that would put us on a, a budget filing date, the tax filing date on the Saturday at the latest. I have been working emails and phones as best I can to get the Caldwell County CAD folks to provide us our rate calculations. Last, about two weeks ago, they sent in their certified tax rules. In those tax rules, the, they, there's two different rates that they provide, or two different taxable values they provide us. They gave us a grand total, and then they gave us an ARB approved. The difference between those two in the years past hasn't been that large, about $1, $2 million. This year, that difference is $6 million. So when you're looking at the taxable value, and I'm trying to calculate the taxes, last year and the year before, from what I can tell, we used the grand total rate, the grand, grand total taxable value. Well, in the calculation that, that the CAD folks put together, that grand total rate ended up being within $40 of the calculated rate that we're supposed to use for setting our tax. So last year was great. This year, I am less certain that that's going to happen because of the $6 million difference between the grand total rate and the ARB rate, the AR, or the ARB value. I think it's the Adjustment Review Board approved rate, or. So it's a difference of the taxable value of all the property in Martindale being $68 million or $62 million and that you apply a rate against, and that gives you how much revenue is collected. The, the latest guidance I received late yesterday was to use a $62 million figure. To this point in our budget discussions, we've been using the $68 million figure. So that's, that's a significant impact on our budget, potentially, on what the no new revenue rate will be calculated to be, what the voter approver rate will be calculated to be, and the rest. I've been working hard with their, working hard to get some clarity on this from the chief appraiser and the deputy appraiser over there without much success.
All right, so what's.
The, the big concern is that if, if I'm not able to clear this up by, say, Thursday, that filing date on, they're required to file on the 8th. So they better get their stuff in order.
The 8th of.
CAD has to publish.
September or August.
There's a truth in taxation website that they have to publish to. They have to publish to that website by the end of this weekend, from what I understand. So.
Are they always this close? Is this unusual?
Well, what's, what's unusual about this year is, we were close last year, but the difference between the taxable values was only about $40. And so it really didn't make a difference for us when we were setting our tax levy. That may not be the same again this year.
Because.
Because of the.
Their price rates are going up so high.
I think it's because there's so much in protest.
Oh. I can understand that. I filed, I filed too, though.
Yeah, so. And so that's, it's throwing me for a loop. I don't have a lot of clarity on it. I was hoping to be able to, tonight, be able to discuss it and go forward. What's likely going to happen, though, if we don't get the, if I don't get the tax rate information tomorrow or, or Thursday, likely we'll, we will not be able to formally file the budget with the, with the city clerk, which is. which is required, and that's, once that's done, that starts our thirty days.
Peter.
Yeah.
Um, so like, whenever you said they're not getting you your information, like, are you calling, emailing?
I'm leaving voicemails, I'm leaving, I called three times today.
And you're emailing.
And I'm emailing.
Well, they had, they had COVID.
I think what it might be is that they're just slammed and they're, I don't know, I don't know, I, I, I don't, other than them being very busy, because it's a very time, very busy time of year for them, I can't speculate on what else might be happening. So, if, if those things slip, we're in a day-to-day slip on how soon we can hold our meeting to adopt the budget and, and tax levy. So if we're not filed by Thursday, being able to pass the budget on the regular council meeting on September seventh, starts slipping later into September. Um, I'm letting you know that, just so you're looking at, you know, leave plans or the rest, you start leaving it open, tho, those last three weeks of September, in case we need to have, have a meeting. The, the news is, we still have a regular council meeting on the twenty-first. I would be surprised if it goes that long or that late that we don't have this clarified and be able to file our budget for the year. But it's a, I don't want to do it on our last regular council meeting, because if something happens, we need at least seven days to publish a tax notice and, um, adopt a tax levy. So, if we get into a public hearing and, you know, we're, we're proposing to do a certain tax levy and the public, you know, strongly rejects it, and the city council changes its mind for, as an example, we would, we would need at least seven days to republish all the notices to be able to go back and do it. And so, having a, planning for the twenty-first to be our last day to, to pass a budget, a little bit risky.
The goal is no later than the seventh.
My, well, my goal's no later than the seventh, but I'm likely going, that, that date's going to likely slip, and we might need to have a meeting on the fourteenth. Or sometime in that, between the seventh and the twenty-first, have a meeting.
Would it help to have somebody go down to the offices or try to talk to somebody?
Well, I was thinking of that, doing just that thing, going, going and standing on somebody's desk and saying, notice me.
I mean, if they, I bet you the mayor, they, you know.
Well, see, I could make a phone call after this, because I'm on the board at the Caldwell County, so I'll find out what's going on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, also, they're, the Caldwell County has several meetings and stuff, I don't know if they have stuff.
The last one was canceled, you have one that was canceled, so I'll get, I'll see what's going on.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure there's a very easy, clear explanation.
I'll, I'll tell her to give you a call tomorrow.
Alright, so that's where we're at with budget, keep, keep the latter part of September open, and, uh, as, as they say, Semper Gumby, be flex, always flexible. It's a, it's an old Pentagon joke, uh, it's a Semper Fi, like.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, I had never.
Not a know, I just thought Mr. Bill. Gumby, did you say Gumby?
Gumby.
Yeah.
Mr. Bill.
If, if there was ever doubt that you're a dad, you would now fish me down with that joke.
There you go, there you go, alright, that concludes my administrative report, unless there's any other questions.
Okay, so now we're ready for the financial report, Dewayne.
Jared, did you ship your email for an updated utility fund report?
Yeah.
Texas disposal bill has dropped, so I updated it for that.
And since our biggest bill.
Oh, it went down?
So I provided you guys, uh, the standard report that we, uh, we go through each month. The bank balances as of about three o'clock this afternoon, you see the, the general fund is at a whopping eighteen thousand dollars. I, uh, I did a little, uh, cash flow projection through the end of the fiscal year, and, uh, we should have adequate funds coming in, uh, by the end of the year, with just normal cash flow, um, so that's good, we're not going to have to borrow from our reserves, um, which are actually operating reserves. But, um, so I looked at that today. The, you see the monies in the street and road fund, the court restricted fund, police restricted utility fund, and the deposit fund, as well as the community development, which is the grant fund, uh, total ninety-two thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars. The tax pool emergency fund's two hundred twenty-two thousand. The Public Fund Investment Act, two hundred sixty-six thousand. In that second line there, that hundred and ninety-seven thousand, that's the operating reserves that are currently have built up and that I, I'm thinking I may not have to tap before the end of the fiscal year. And then you see the long-term capital improvement fund, but I know that we have talked about putting additional funds over there for a road project or something, but action hasn't been taken on that, so that money is still sitting up in that hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollar general fund overflow. I think it was roughly fifty-five thousand that we had left on that, uh, that last coronavirus grant. By the way, we, we submitted for another one today, coronavirus relief fund. I'm unclear how much we're submitting for there, but I got the paperwork.
That will, it's paid off and paid out in two annual installments, the, which will total roughly two hundred seventy thousand dollars. So the first, I don't know, doing math in public's never a good thing, but.
Yeah, but I, I, I thought that first fund was pretty restricted on, you know, had to go on, oh, but it can go on infrastructure and.
The, the fifty-five thousand reimbursed us for personnel costs, and now it's kind of just extra money.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, the, the other one, this two hundred and seventy-ish.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That has restrictions.
Okay.
And, and even that other grant, I had to, you know, strictly account for, I mean, um, we, it, it was truly reimbursement of expenses. You also see the due to comptroller for excess fine, uh, number there. Any questions on the bank balances? I don't think there's anything else to leave there. Uh, next, uh, slide should be the, uh, general fund budget versus actual through July. That's, uh, ten months into the year, roughly eighty-three percent of the year. Uh, first line item, you see property tax revenue, we are now at one hundred percent. We've collected all of the property tax revenue for the year plus forty-seven dollars. So, um, so that, that is in, you see the, uh, municipal court revenue continues to be significantly under, under plan. With that percent of budget column, if it were ratable, would be about eighty-three percent. And you see that instead of only forty-six, forty-nine, twenty-seven. Sales tax revenue, very strong, um, as Jared's mentioned before. And, uh, investment interest very weak. As expected, personnel, uh, the, all of those line items are within tolerance, there's that one big credit of forty-eight thousand dollars there from that coronavirus fund that helped offset payroll.
Dewayne, Dewayne, I have a question before we go further.
Yes.
On, on line item. I, pardon me, five zero seven zero miscellaneous fee revenue, which is four thousand eighty-three percent over budget, can you give us a little rundown on what that is? And it's fantastic, but yet I'd like to know.
Yeah, I'll have to, uh, I'll have to look that up, I'm not, not sure of the details, but yeah, that is a very good question. Not in that on my computer at the moment, but I will look into that and report that. Uh, you see the, uh, the payroll reimbursement from the utility is, is right on plan, and then you see the operating expenses at seventy-six percent of budget. The only things that are, you know, really over there is that dues and subscriptions. A little bit over, but not a big number. None of the others were particularly alarming. The next page has the contracted services, a hundred and thirty-five thousand four hundred six dollars, those are seventy-four percent. So that is within tolerance, you see, uh, net income over expenses of a hundred and twenty-nine, five sixty-four year to date.
Um, I had a question about the dues and subscriptions, you briefly mentioned that, but if the budget is a thousand and it's twelve seventy-three, so you're basically only two hundred and seventy-three dollars over, how does that calculate to be? Oh, I see a hundred and twenty, oh, so it's actually twenty-seven percent over the budget, you know? The budget is one hundred, but since it was over, I, okay, yeah, I, I was just trying to work crunch, crunch the numbers, thank you.
Any other questions on the general fund? Budget report, the next page shows payments that have been made out of, uh, out of that fund for the month. Like anything out of the ordinary for the month there. The next one would be the utility fund, and that's the one that hopefully we got to.
Yep.
Probably the updated one. Okay, you see, uh, two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars of public income, which is eighty-five percent of plan. So, uh, that is, that is in line, month to day, or excuse me, year to day, and then expenses. You scroll down, two hundred and forty-two thousand, eighty percent of plan, so that's underneath the eight, three percent that I mentioned earlier. Was that line seventy, eighty solid waste expenses that I increased from the reports I emailed out this afternoon? So you see, um, net ordinary income, twenty thousand dollars, roughly income over expense for the year from the utility fund. There's no questions on that report, the next report would be, um, the payments. That, uh, for the month. And the next report would be the special revenue fund. That, uh, includes specially designated funds, thirty-four thousand two sixty-two. Almost brought in all the money for the budget for the year already for ten months. Spent, barely over half of it, so, uh, net ordinary income, fourteen, nearly fifteen thousand dollars.
So which one is this?
These, uh, you see, this is like a street and road sales tax allocation.
What's the title of this?
Uh, special revenue fund, should be the last thing in the state.
Yeah, here it is, okay.
Yeah, the majority of those line items are little, little numbers from, that we get from, uh, from the court that are restricted and they're used, so they're put over here and maintained as a special revenue fund. So, that is all I have. Rolling along, so I can get our property tax rate figured out for next year.
No kidding.
But even if we don't, it looks like we got reserves to deal with.
We'll make it this year.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Dewayne. Yes.
It is on the general fund, vendor balance detail. There's a, a payment to Michael Giannando for two hundred dollars. Is that for mowing the green space at Hobson Ranch?
Is that a one-time mow or a?
Uh, he mows it about every two or three weeks. Maybe one time last month, but I know he's got a check here today, he mowed it again recently.
And do we have a contract with him?
No.
No.
One of the things that I'm working on, Lisa, with, and I was discussing with the mayor this week, is putting out a firm fixed price contract for all mowing and property maintenance requirements in the city.
Including the parks?
Including the parks.
Okay.
So, the, we, we've maintained a pretty good awareness of, I mean, this year's a little more wet than, than the year prior.
A lot more wet.
Uh, so there's a little more mowing, but if anything else, it gives us like, kind of a, a high, high value in terms of how frequently we can expect mowing to happen and give us a good estimate for when we look at price reasonableness, when, if we look at, go to a firm fixed price contract.
The, uh, the line item on the miscellaneous fee income that was so over, except big distribution we got from Caldwell County for those child safety, if, uh, one payment of five thousand seven hundred dollars and another one of seven sixty-five. Uh, and I think it's about, um, three thousand dollars a year, I think we'll probably get out of that.
And what is it, and what is it for, child safety, what?
It's, you know, like, like when we went through our special revenue, or special revenue fund earlier, where we have special designated funds, well, the county collects certain, uh, fees at the court level, I believe, for child safety, and it's allocated across the municipalities. Um, and we got a large payment for just catching up the, uh, cleaning up their books, basically, and, and then there'll be a quarterly distribution, as I remember.
And it can go into the general fund, or is it?
It has a, has a specific use. Yeah, right now, we're, we're holding it in the PFIA and keeping accounting of it, but we, we might end up trying to donate it to a school district or something, once we get, get the opportunity to. You know, we don't really have, we don't have schools in Martindale.
I think, though, like, whenever we do, um, something, I saw similar in our community, was like, where the city bought helmets and then passed them out to whoever wanted to come, so like, if we're doing a citywide cleanup, then we could buy helmets and pass them out at the park, or we could do something with car seats, whoever needs a car seat, come by, first come, first served, so we could do something like that.
I totally agree, I would like for us to see, I would like to see us, uh, keep that money inside for our residents. I agree.
Yeah, have, we, safety programs, child safety programs, like, you know.
I think I've seen them, you know, like, do what I said, like, with the helmets.
That'd be great.
Well, I think that'd be great, the helmets.
Yeah, and, uh, Jared, right back up on the bank statement page, the first page, that's in a special bank account segregated, so you see that sixty-four ninety-three seventy-five restricted child safety fees. That's in a special bank.
Oh, I see, okay. So that's what we ended up with, okay. Cool.
Where are we started?
Uh, on the first page, uh, about three quarters of the way down, child safety. Restricted child safety fees under the PFIA.
Do we use that, like, at the park, or something to do with the place where the kids play?
Well, we, I think, we could put that on a gender item too.
Yeah, right.
What, what options we have.
Good idea.
It was for education, I believe.
Education only, not for excellent.
Safety and education or something like that. Okay. Thank you, Dewayne.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, so we don't have Judge Fusco with us tonight, he said he'll report at our next meeting. Um, and Chief Jorgens is also not here tonight. His grandmother fell ill suddenly and he had to take her to the hospital, so. Um, and Historic Commission, Greg Foster's not here. I know that they are going to have a, um, a meeting sometime this week. Uh, I haven't heard when, there's a business that wants to. I haven't heard when. There's a business that wants to start next door that they'll be reviewing. So there will be something coming up.
And whenever, whenever we do get a report, I'm, I wanted, I've had a resident ask if there was a review of the Historic Commission for the sign that appears to be temporary, but put on the building across the street that says coming soon, some business. So I just wanted to state that for the record, that, that is a question that is, has been asked.
California brought in that or something.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we don't know anything about that. So.
No, we should.
Yeah, we should. Um, and parks, do you have anything to report for the parks?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief because I know we have several things on the agenda tonight. First off, I want to thank the mayor for ordering and the city administrator for ordering a dumpster that is behind City Hall to enable us to put the excess garbage that is created during the weekends from our park system. So I appreciate that. Also, I reached out to Ken Barrett with Text dot about the mowing that needed to be done along the embankments, the bridges and the fairways of 1979 between the bridge and Fannin Street. Within a week's time, Text dot came and has mowed areas in phase one, phase two, and phase three. They also really nicely weed whacked down the embankments of the bridge. And so, because it was getting hard to pull in and out and see the road of 1979 from the phase one park. So I appreciate that. I also, Adrian and I met with a man that has a drone camera and we went to all the parks in, in the system and got very good drone, overhead drone shots of Hobson Ranch, which is a five acre park. Well, it isn't a park, it's green space. But we got drone shots first of Hobson Ranch. We went to Guardiola Park, Allen Bates and Phase One, Two, and Three. So we have very good shots of all of our park systems that will accompany our survey when that is ready. I also want to reach out and thank our city administrator for filling out the application for the water meter at Guardiola Park that has since been received by our Martindale Water Supply. They have also given me a, or which I asked them to create and have given to our accountant a bill for that such water meter and then also the $151 that was received and contributions will pay for three months of the water bill at Guardiola Park. I've also received two bids on the tree work at Allen Bates Park. They're generally about $2,000. This is to remove two huge China berry trees, two hackberry trees to grind down the stumps and fully remove those trees. And I hope to do that by the end of the fiscal, before the end of the fiscal year. Myself and other friends of the park, namely Sean McDonald, we installed two cage garbage cans at Phase One. We poured the slabs, which are two feet by two feet in diameter, set up bolts in those concrete slabs and have since bolted down the cage garbage cans to the concrete pads. I also put two concrete, I mean, two garbage can liners in, in those. So now those are going to be easily available to remove the garbage bags.
To put into the dumpster.
To put in the, to the dumpster.
Okay.
I, I myself have cleaned up all the garbage in the park system for the last two weekends. At Phase One, Allen Bates Park, Saturday is the worst day. Our garbage cans are overflowing. I know recently that city personnel took a picture of the garbage cans overflowing at Phase One and the vultures were eating out of the garbage can. So we are acting upon that and we are remedying the situation. And I, I think we've made some great strides.
So in other words, and you're relying on volunteers to do this. And so far it's only been you and Sean, right?
Pretty much, yes. Well, also Jeff Latimer and Sergio have been going to Phase One. He primarily focuses on Skull Bridge, but he has now since come, come here. Uh, one other quick thing, we did install another garbage can at Allen Bates Park that is chain locked to the disposable can band ordinance sign. So that garbage can is closer to the river. I myself today weed whacked the slopes going down to the river from the sign and the garbage can. The Johnson grass was in excess of four and a half feet tall. So I, I.
But it wasn't in the area for Text dot to do it.
It wasn't what?
Wasn't in the area for Text dot to do it.
No, no, this is on our own park where as you walk down to the river, there's that sloping slopes and the Johnson grass was very high. I'll later give a report to, to the mayor and we'll go over the budget tomorrow. The remaining budget in the park budget is about 6,000. Big expenses for next year will be the fall protection mulch for the playground system. We need to redo the mulch in the playground. I want to replace the benches at Guardiola Park. I'd like to maybe spray some industrial vinegar to, to kill the trail, the weeds that are in the trail at Allen Bates Park. So we can find where that trail is, that was a great walking trail. We're going to continue to work on the master plan. And I want to create a volunteer timesheet for, so us, me and others can document how much time we spent actually doing this volunteer work in the parks. I know it's a hot time of season and very humid, but I would encourage all of us here at the table and listening to please come and visit our parks and volunteer when you can, because I would like to see more of a volunteer program set up in our park system. Thank you.
Are you still doing Mondays, volunteer days or something?
I haven't created any yet because, because I'm going to work with Alexandra Walker, the new person on the Parks Advisory Committee, who's very familiar with that. So I hope to soon set up a new volunteer program for our, our park system.
So would it have been helpful to have somebody, to hire somebody? For this summer temporarily, which is what you were looking to do?
Well, I, I, I think the committee should come, come up with a good plan. I think seeing that the budget on the park system is remaining stagnant over the next two years, that $19,000 isn't very much. More than half of the budget of the park system this past, this current year has been spent on mowing. I think we probably spent at least $10,000 on, on mowing. So if we do need more employees, we are currently trying to expand the contracts we have to help with the garbage problem in our park system for the remainder of the fiscal year. A contract will be in place and we will show that to the council and adopt that hopefully, or, or the mayor and I could discuss it if it's a lower level expense perhaps, you know? But it is very urgent that we address this garbage, this garbage problem we have in the park and we have done that. So I, I appreciate the help.
What's interesting about the can that's in Allen Bates Park that Sam was telling me about, since it's chained to the can band sign, people are putting bottles and cans in it.
It would have been nice if we would have had recycling.
Yeah.
But you know, like they have some cans that are blue or green, one's for recycling, one is for landfill. It would have been nice if we could have done that, but.
No, we, we, we have that at the Bates Park. There are two cage garbage cans there. One is spray painted blue and the other one is just this color that, that it is. So we have one.
So it has signage, like one is recyclable, one is landfill?
No, it's spray painted blue. But I am going to go down and spray paint the other garbage can in Phase One. And there are little metal plates on the garbage cans there. So I could put something that says trash and something that says.
Just do the recycle symbol.
Yeah, yeah. So, so yes, that's the last thing I have to do at Phase One to spray the garbage can blue. And please get down and look at Phase One and look at the condition of the road system. There is something to be desired. So that's some, something that will be discussed in the future. It's extremely ruddy, holy and dangerous.
Shut it down. Shut the truck traffic down. Four-wheelers in there.
Is there any, any, any way for like the, the ADA swing, one swing?
Well, there, the.
I thought at parks, it was, we were required at least to have like, I mean, I only know because I was at the park and I saw a mom take her son out of the wheelchair and then she was running back and forth with them in the swing. And I know they have certain swings that you just would pick them up and just put them in the swing and strap them in. I don't think they're that much, but I know that before Mayor Tavini, I'd ask, I know I've been asking for an ADA swing, but do you think that's anywhere in the future? Or do you want me to try to get with organizations to try to make that happen? Or is that something that the parks was willing to do is to get one swing for ADA?
That'd be child, child safety, a child safety fund possibly. I know expert.
Well, we do have a wheelchair ramp going to the swing playground, but as you may have said, there's, there's not an ADA accessible swing, but at least you can roll up to it. But those kinds of items put into a park require much more certification, drawing and at very high expense.
Can you put that on the agenda for the next Parks meeting?
Yeah, because it, it, it would require a bunch of extra money to do that or, or grants, but.
See, I think I've just seen them there like on regular swing sets and where the regular swing would go, they just do the screws like that. And then it's like a little plastic chair and you just put your child in there that's in a wheelchair that can't walk and you just strap them in.
Hmm, yeah. Okay.
Uh, one comment, Mr. Clinton. I saw a truck down there. They, they went past that barrier, that limestone block barrier and they're right on the edge of the river. It was a black truck. I, I just drove by. I saw that.
I've seen RVs even pull past that limestone block and.
Is there any way we could put a chain through those blocks?
Well, if you go down there and see the placement of the two garbage cans that we put up are right adjacent to a limestone block. And so the two garbage cans where they're placed will give, will give blockage in that area. So what we want to do is move that one limestone block over about seven feet, which will prevent people from accessing the area that they're not supposed to drive to. So we will block that off.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's all I got. Thank you.
That's awesome, Sam. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
You need to take a deep breath after all that.
Yeah, I have some notes, you know, there, there's more. So yes, I, I will submit a report for the fiscal year 2022 about our hopes and desires.
Uh huh. And just to kind of show you, this is who I was talking about, that frequents our park, that the mom was running back and forth with him on the swing. There is no, she had to carry him out of the wheelchair and she was running back and forth with him, like with, in back of a, with her hands and running so he could experience swinging.
That's great. Thank you.
Mike, anything on planning, Sam?
Nothing to report.
Okay. And we don't have anyone from.
We have Joy on.
Oh, Joy here. Joy, do you have anything to report from the river or from the river?
Yeah, I've got a few items. We've updated our recommendations for wastewater discharge quality parameters. And we sent a letter about three weeks ago to, via email. And basically, what that letter showed was that we were now recommending quality limits of five milliliters per liter of biochemical oxygen demand, five milli, five milligrams per liter of total suspended solids, two milligrams per liter of ammonium nitrogen and 0.5 milligrams per liter of phosphorus. And these are the same limits that the HK Realty slash Bar Ranch has agreed to if they do end up building their own package plant. We are continuing to monitor the can ban. This will become more effective, obviously, when Sam Marcus climbs on board. Although we'll, we'll never be able to keep up with the trash coming from the outfitters river traffic. The eyes of the Sam Marcus River continue to do a stellar job with their with, they get together probably at least twice a week and pick up tons of trash. And incidentally, they have recently made their nonprofit status official. A couple of us from the River Advisory Committee got together and picked up trash at Allen Bates Park and the park at 1979 Bridge. And that was about three weeks ago. Yeah. And.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's see, we have a work group and they are looking at floodway and floodplain regulations and we hope to have some recommendations in that regard in the next month or two. Let's see what else. Jared has recently informed us about the Guadalupe Regional Flood Planning Group meeting tomorrow and we hope to have some of our members attend that.
Is that the one that said Wembley City Hall?
Yes. And there is also a, a virtual, a way to attend it virtually.
Well, there is.
Yep. And well, I could send that to you. I think I have your email.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Sure.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any questions?
Joy, Joyce, Lisa, shout out to that list. I believe I already received that email, but I just want to make sure that I got the same one.
Sure.
Thank you.
Joy, Sam Clinton here with a question. We have several tubing companies that are in our city or not, not in our city, but on, on our river. Is there any limits of say, how many people they can have into their business, say, per weekend day? You know, is there like, well, you can serve a few thousand or, I mean, in terms of the river usage, are there any limits placed upon them?
There are no limits.
That's the first thing I know about.
Okay, because yeah, the, it, it expands into parking and all those other critical factors when it's very busy, but.
I had, I had at one point approached the county because they, in my mind, they should on end free, given when, uh, weekend, apply for a mass gathering permit. But that, nothing became of that.
Oh.
Hmm.
Okay, that would solve the problem.
And that was in Hayes County, right?
Caldwell.
Oh, Caldwell. Don't they start things? Or is it Caldwell?
It would be Caldwell.
Okay. Okay, thank, thank you, Joy.
Joy?
Yes.
This Jan. To clarify about that email, this is wastewater from businesses that are going directly into creeks and, and the river?
Wastewater treatment plants that discharge into the, the river or its tributaries.
Okay, okay. So these are, and these are the regulations that you recommend that we use. Okay, gotcha. And do, do we know if our regular wastewater is doing that?
I believe our treatment plant goes by a 5521 parameter.
Well, technically our.
Discharge. Discharge into a tributary.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right. That's right.
Throw on the ground and then it seeps through the.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Joy, thanks for mentioning that. Really, Sam Marcus is an 800 pound gorilla on this can ban issue. You know, Martindale did the right thing and we really need to get Sam Marcus on board with this. I've been, I've been working on this for several, several years. The eyes are doing a great job and all I can say is everybody take pictures, take pictures, document. So document, document, and we'll just inundate Sam Marcus with these, with these pictures and photographs. And to also maybe convince the tubing companies to do a self-imposed can ban if they see them out of trash. They say they pick it up, but it's impossible to pick it all up, as we all well know. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Joy. You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to item number seven, consent items. So we have three sets of minutes from July 6, 2021. There's two pages there. The workshop and then the actual minutes. And then from July 2, 2019. And then we have the accounts payable and we can approve all of this with one motion.
Mayor, I would like to motion that we accept the. Mayor, I would like a motion that we accept the minutes and accounts payable. I have, but I have a question, so.
Oh, second. Okay, Sonya, second. Okay, what is your question, Lisa?
Yes, ma'am. It is on the July 2 of 2019, on the first page of the minutes. Under item four B, the last asterisk says, thanks the city for working with Smart Track ETJ issues. My question, is that Smart Terminal? Or what is Smart Track since it's obviously been a little while?
That would be Mark Terminal.
It's supposed to be. I just, I just wanted to clarify that because the Smart Terminal is definitely, we want to make sure that that's in our records proper. So I will amend my motion unless anybody else has something but to state that we.
So Sylvie was mentioning, like, the speaker likely meant Smart Terminal. But in the audio recording, it said Smart Track.
Okay. So do we just go with their mistake or do we correct it? I mean, I'm not, do we have things on the record?
Yeah, I understood that it was the Smart Terminal, but.
I agree with Lisa. It should be documented. It is minutes. So it should be.
The day will come when we have an archive of minutes that you will be able to just click in a search bar and look up Smart Terminal. And if in fact it's not in there, it won't come up. If it is, it will.
Good point, Lisa. I agree. Should be checked.
Well, I can amend and say per your, you know, per you stating what it should be.
To clarify.
First is what I heard on the audio.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. That would be great.
Yes.
And I'll send back this front page next, the next meeting for you to approve the change.
Okay, so let's just amend it to approve the minutes of July 6.
Well, it's July 6.
Yeah, but July 6, that was July.
Nineteen.
Yeah, because she's going to bring the amended version for us to approve next time.
You'll keep this with the minimum and then I'll bring it back.
No problem.
Okay, got it.
The person would be as follows, that I make a motion to accept the accounts payable and the minutes as they are presented with the inclusion of correcting item number four B to state what we've discussed regarding Smart Terminal instead of Smart Track. So just fix it and move on.
Second.
And Sonya, second. Okay, are there any other comments?
Only comment, I guess I can't vote on the approved the minutes for July 6. I was not here. I was absent, if that makes a difference. Technically.
It doesn't.
Okay, continue.
Who's that?
Like.
But he's in favor of the other.
I mean, yeah, so technically, how can I vote on?
And the accounts payable.
Yeah.
It's presented tonight. Just go for a vote.
Okay.
So. So Jared, in a case like that, if he can't vote on one set of minutes, do we have to do them?
From the vote.
The whole vote, accounts payable and everything?
Yeah.
I can't, I'm.
That's true.
I mean, voting to approve minutes is purely procedural. You're not.
You can say yes.
I don't think it matters if he was absent.
Right, I mean, you can still vote.
Yeah, you can still vote. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those who approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Second.
Sonya.
Okay, thank you.
Sam, do you approve?
I approve.
Okay, so that's all five people. Okay, so we'll go on to number eight. The first discussion item is on the budget and property tax rate.
So I covered a lot of this in my administrative reports. I don't want to get too deep into it, but the main thought I want city council to consider until next time when we discuss this is if we, if we're in a scenario where taxable value goes down, do we want to maintain our budgeted revenue? So the difference would be if we keep our revenue level the same from property tax, but our taxable value went down, that means the rate's going up. And so the consideration will be either we adjust the rate up, which would be the first time in quite a while that some council have done that, still staying below the voter approval rate. Or do we go ahead and keep the rate that we were planning to use and just take that cut somewhere else? And likely where that cut would come from would be it's either getting rid of that halftime person who would do the building permits or it's taking the cut out of our savings for our long-term capital improvement funds. So we can, I can answer questions on that today, but I don't have solid numbers for us to consider. So I'm not sure how useful that would be. But I'll leave it there for you guys to consider and then we can discuss it maybe the next meeting. So you have questions about it now?
Yeah, I think we need numbers.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then I make a motion that we table A until next meeting. Make sure that it's on the next meeting since I think it's an important discussion.
One second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this item until the next meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we'll move on to building regulations.
Yeah, so I. It may not be in the perfect form, but here's the proposed ordinance language to be considered. An ordinance of the city council, the city of Martinville, Texas, to revise chapter 150, the building regulations, the code ordinances, recitals. Whereas chapter 150 of the city of Martinville Code of Ordinances establishes policy and regulations for the construction of buildings. And whereas the city council, the city of Martinville recognizes that currently adopted codes are out of date and should be repealed. And whereas, I guess I need to add an "and" there. And whereas the city council, the city of Martinville wishes to adopt the latest published codes to govern construction and construction-related activities, promote the health and welfare within the city. And I'm going to have to get that real quick. Sorry. And now therefore be it ordained, the city council, the city of Martinville repeals all codes listed under section 150.002A, which provides the list of the international national codes that have previously been adopted. And adopts the following codes to govern construction and construction-related activities. Basically, what this is doing would be to swap our, I'll pull the, the, do a little side by side comparison here. Take our section 150, building codes, where it has the 2009 international codes and the 2011 National Electrical Code, and replacing them with the 2021 international codes and the 2020 National Electric Code.
So it's basically changing the year.
Basically changing the year.
Is there much difference on the code? Have you read, you looked through it?
Not to any great extent, but the rebuttal to that is if something significant had changed, would we still not adopt it? There's likely, there's likely things in there, especially on energy conservation between 2009, 2021, where you could see differences. The, these codes are, in a quick review, to see other cities have adopted these. I know Austin is adopting its 2021 codes. So other cities are taking action to.
So we don't have to? We can use the 2009?
I recommend not, but we.
If we don't change.
Because we run into situations where you may, you may have codes being listed in state law or elsewhere that would supersede ours and then depending on the application and using the latest and greatest, I think.
New technology.
Two things, reading all of those codes, you would, you would find reading War and Peace like.
I know.
Probably would be.
That's what has to question.
Yeah, and number two, if we encounter something in these international codes, the city always reserves the right to, on an ad hoc basis, if need be, grant a variance, amend ordinances. So it's not like you're bound by this from here eternity, never to be able to act again. If there ends up being something that is unreasonable or excessively arduous, the city can work around it.
Jan, if I may, Dan, it's kind of like this. It's really important for us to stay current or at least not more than one cycle behind. For example, in 1978, the International Building Codes changed for mobile homes because mobile, in regards to their electrical, the way the wiring was done. Because people, because how, mobile homes were burning down all over the place. So if we don't move up to the codes, it could be like they could do it the way they used to. So.
I had one of those aluminum wire.
It's just approve it and move on.
Yeah.
I make a motion to accept an ordinance of the city council, of the city of Martinville to revise chapter 150, building regulations of the Code of Ordinances, A through J.
My second thought.
I had a question. What if people currently have a building permit that has been processed and is being looked or has been reviewed and submitted and accepted? Now that we've changed, would that have an impact on the building permits that we have received, say, on this two-story building across the street? Will they thus have to update or change things in regard to that? Or does the permit he has in place stand?
Pending ordinance is fine. It is only subsequent ordinances that are affected by the order change. In other words, if an ordinance has already been issued, but if a permit has already been issued, that is, that is fine. Work can proceed under that.
He's grandfathered.
The fact is that contractors, electrical plumbing and such, they are licensed through and required to use the most current international building codes. And so that's typically what they do. So they typically do more than what we had on the books at '09, but this is just getting everything into compliance.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing no more discussion, all those in favor of updating chapter 150, building regulations of the Code of Ordinances, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Lisa, was that you?
Yes, ma'am. Hi.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, we're going to move on to number nine, discussion only, review of chapter 91, public nuisances.
Yeah, so this builds a little bit from the administrative report previously, but the intent of today's discussion is to satisfy the request of city council to start reviewing those ordinances that were on a review list. And so I don't, I do not have any recommended changes to this, this chapter. There's the issue that is being front of mind is what you do with substandard structures. Most of that is if it's not in the building codes, it's in our public nuisance. And then there's a small section within our large code ordinances to talk about demolition by neglect within the historic district, which is in chapter 154. So I have that paragraph. But for tonight, I figure we would, we could just review, review chapter 91, which is the public nuisances relating, relates to noise, brush weeds, road maintenance, junked-in nuisance vehicles, and substandard structures. And then we can jump into 154 and quickly review the paragraph there. And we can take as longer, as little as, as we want on this. So I'll kind of give, give the lay of land how this all works. Noise regulations sets a limit on amplified noise within the city's limits and during certain hours establishes quiet hours, if you will. So in, in the case where there's amplified noise being emitted, that drives a requirement, excuse me, a requirement to come in to get a permit roundabout way. That's the only, that's one of the few areas where we have codified in our ordinances event permits, kind of often gets tied into these noise permits. But that's, that's where we're at. So I'll, I'll pause, let you review if there's any discussion.
Does it have a decimal level? I mean, do we, is there a decimal level? I mean, that's something we got to, is that qualified in there?
There's a decimal level under state law. Trying to remember what there's a deficit before. I think it's, it's referenced here, I think. Well, no, that's an emergency vehicle.
I know Harry's mentioned it before.
I think, I'm thinking. I could be really off on this, like 85 is what's coming.
And we have, and we do have means to check the decimal level. If somebody complains, they can call and say, my neighbor's having a big party. What's the decimal level?
If it's unreasonable, loud, or disturbing, unnecessary.
Haraoke night on Thursday.
Yeah, I was going to say, somebody was complaining about, well.
Well, let's ask, let's ask our attorney.
Because it was 10 minutes after 10 or something. I think that was unreasonable.
Let's ask the attorney. I mean, that's, that's going to, I'm just saying, you're going to have to quantify it. What's loud to you might be loud to, not loud to somebody else. That's wrong. That's wrong. That's my point.
Unreasonable noise, limitations of volume.
So what, what?
There we go.
What is it?
Eighty-five decibels. There we go.
Do we add that link, language in there? Or is that necessary? I mean, it'd be, it'd be.
It's a warning device.
So. So that's, that's under the penal code. And it, 85 decibels is pretty darn loud.
You're right, but where does it taken from?
You have to have a decimal.
But what, where do you take the decimal reading at that?
We can, we can, as I recall, determine that. It doesn't have to be a point of origin. I believe it is 85 decibels at the point of.
Let me look at this. It's under chapter 42 of the penal, it's under the penal code.
The police, the police officers have an app on their phone that reads the decibels. They're able to take a reading from wherever is necessary.
Okay. So, but, but we're looking at two different things. Chapter, chapter 40 of the penal code sets criminal violations. Chapter chapter forty of the penal code sets criminal violations. That. Some someone can be criminally cited for. The difference is that we as a city have the authority to set different noise limits. I mean, because. In cases that I've litigated on this point before, we we had a. It was a residential area, a wedding venue opened up, and we were on the. The property of of the people that were complaining, and there was a band playing next door. It was horrendously loud. But it didn't register at eighty-five decibels. So. But that's a criminal level. If we want to set a lower level. Yes. We 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 have we have the authority to limit hours.
Times.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, what do y'all think about this? I mean, I think we need to have a little clarification. Go ahead.
Why are we discussing this?
Because he wanted to. It's a short answer. Um, no, so there was a. We have a running list of ordinances to be reviewed. This is one of them. The noise regulations is a part of the new the larger chapter on nuisances. It it is a little.
We didn't get it from flying from a citizen. We need to.
No, no, but it's something that. You may want to cons- council may want to consider as we have event, commercial event venues that operate. Do kind of what Kent described and possibly have bands playing at weddings or or the rest. Well, I have we have um music downtown in the uh on the weekends. This this might be something that depending on. I don't know if we need to regulate.
I think it's already like clearly defined. Like it has to be turned off at a certain time.
No, I don't see a time.
Well, I mean, I think it's it's on uh, isn't it like eleven?
Well, I'm just. I'm just discussing this because I live real close to an Airbnb that sometimes gets very loud. And I think it needs to be specifically written if I have a problem with it to to say it's it's what's a black and white times. Decimal or whatever you want to see. What's what's reasonable, what's unreasonable.
Times, I I did it. You're right. I didn't see it here. The times are actually in our uh filming ordinance. We're talking about noise, noise related to.
It has our filming ordinance.
But they have to stop the music in town like at there is a certain time. Mica has to stop at a certain time. Like we they can't keep the bands that are going on.
I'm talking about Airbnbs. They're all over the town. You're you're next to an Airbnb. They're cranking it up at three o'clock in the morning. You're not gonna be real happy about that, you know? So I think especially of all these Airbnbs coming in, I I think there needs to be, it needs to be clarified.
That may maybe something that would be more so on the hotel. I mean, the hotel and tax thing when we start to.
Well, no, no.
Like you're talking about something.
It needs to be across the board.
Correct. I agree with you, Lisa. They do something in there that if you have a problem with your neighbor or whoever, and they're cranking it up and say, hey, uh, they're too loud. What's? Time, you know, decibels, whatever we come up with. That's both. That's vague.
Like, let me just interject. Like, I mean, somebody may be listening to some Conway Twitty kind of loud, and that might be all fine and dandy. But then if I throw on some Run DMC, you know, and it's kind of the same volume, that might not be so desirable.
Which is which is why I think it's important to if if you want to further look at this at a specific decimal level. So that you take out the discretion and then, you know, Woody or or DMC, whatever the decimal level may be, all of you can see that it's.
You are a rapper. Oh, my God. He like.
Let's stay on topic, please. All right. Well, then let's put in to follow this, put in that we follow the same regulations as the as for nose noise. And time are nuts. Noise ordinances as a state. And that.
Eighty-five eighty-five decibels is where you have. It's like OSHA will require you to wear ear protection.
That's too loud. We need it. We need it. We need to really sit down and I think it needs to be.
I I mean, listen, listen, what 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 I would say is. I mean, i- if it's if it's eighty-five decibels. You know, we've set time limits on it, you know, after. After ten thirty, eleven P M before seven A M.
Yeah.
Simply prohibit noise of of a of a certain level. Reason reasonable line equipment use, uh, you know, I mean, those things excluded. But but something something a little more tangible so that if someone goes out and goes, hey, you know, calls calls out, you know, one of the council members here and says, look at this, my my decimal meter is reading blank. And you can.
Yeah.
Be be because because otherwise you're you're gonna get a game of he said, she said.
Correct.
Yeah, and uh, or dealing with Woody and DMC, and that's never a good thing.
So so what I guess.
Stay on top.
I say the questions. I said the question would be, what would be the decimal limit? That would probably be.
Yeah, and I think that Jared can probably do some research into what would be.
I think.
Forty.
So is everybody in consensus that we need to come up with a decimal level and time?
Yeah.
Yes.
I agree.
Okay.
I thought it was ten o'clock.
We can talk about.
We don't have it on here.
That's why we did it. That's why we need to clarify it. Yeah, special events, you know, you do. But you could adapt for special events or whatever. But.
I mean, like if Rolling Stones came to Mica, then I.
But again.
It would be okay if it's over.
You could grant a ver- if there was an event, you can grant a variance.
And it says a special permit here.
Yes.
Submit a special permit application.
Yeah.
Okay.
You got it? You know what? You kind of digest what we're talking about.
We we didn't brush in the like. Is the next one up. This talks about, you know, trubs, trees, grass, stagnant water. Those two tall.
Twelve inches on the weeds. Foot high, was that what it was?
Okay.
Twelve inches, yeah. Though it said discarded personal property. I mean, there's there's homes that collect. Started. They're harboring those things with the anticipation of of using it. So to the person that has excess personal property around around their home, it. I don't know about that clarification. Excess personal property or what whatever, because that. It's not discarded if they're saving it around their house, which you you can see.
Save in your garage or shed or.
Yeah.
Stop there to.
It's like it's like being accumulated.
Oh, there it says. Rubbish. Oh, accumulate or remain. I see. Okay.
And this has the notice to correct uh language where we see that that the owner has to be delivered certified mail. That person can't be obtained in publication in a newspaper. And then if the weeds or on the lot have grown higher than forty-eight inches. And are immediate threat to the health, life, or safety of a person. The city can correct this condition without advance notice. And then and then the the only language that's a little weird is within is this sentence regarding, I think I understand the plain meaning of it, but.
Which sentence?
The Kent, what it talks about, we'll give the owner notice correction within ten days. That within ten days after. The city has already taken action, correct?
I I think so, but we if if we're if we're looking at amending this section, adding a word to.
Okay.
So in part C, they have a year to remedy it or no, if there's something of similar circumstance that is on the property within a year's time?
Yeah.
It's a little hard to to read that.
So if somebody has brush on their property, they haven't cleared in a year. The city can come up and clear it and send them a bill?
Yep.
But if it's in their garage, can we go in their garage and do it? You mentioned something about.
No, I think she was saying it's better to have it in the garage.
Oh, okay.
So at uh a year.
What if it's in the backyard?
That's like giving them a year.
Nobody can see that.
I think we were thinking of those two blue houses over there. They think all that junk is really valuable.
Yeah, they that's why I clarify.
They intend to use it.
Would you interpret that to be a year? When it talks about first anniversary date of generous? That's that's.
That's a long time. It's a long time. It's a long time. I mean, but we do.
What do you think is appropriate?
Thirty days. Fourteen days.
Thirty days at at least. I I I think among this gives someone plenty of time, but. To we have homes that the stuff has been sitting out there for over a year now.
We can we can we can remove the word discarded. I mean, there's. You know, the the old idea comes back to uh. Ordinance restricts enforcement. Some places, it's it's unlawful to have a car on blocks in the front yard. And it's not that having a car on blocks in and of itself is a bad thing, but. The way a person or series of people besides them in their property can have an effect on the collective property values of all. And so. Ultimately, allowing vast accumulations of personal property in 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 a very visible manner. Can't have an impact. And and there's nothing wrong with limiting people's ability to compile personal property in in a very visible place. So if we want to take the word discarded out, we can do that.
I would consider that to because that's something that I noticed that if people are accumulating things and saving them, they apparently have not discarded them. They have anticipations of.
And and it's fine. You know, you you can say you don't, you know, you don't have to discard them, but don't leave them here.
Are you saying allow the definition of rubbish to be garbage, trash, or other personal property?
Or other or other personal property. And and this, I mean, this is tough because you you want every ordinance to be as definite as possible, but. I mean, I, you know, the Supreme Court has looked at certain things that I don't need to be crass, but. One Supreme Court justice, at one point in time, he said, I I don't, I can't define pornography, but it's known when it's seen. And and in taking that that crass analogy, you can't you can't define every instance in which a mass accumulation of some type of personal property would be offensive or detrimental. But. You've got to have to some degree the ability to regulate that mass accumulation of personal property.
Improperly stored personal property.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think. If they had it all in the shed. That's.
Because it wouldn't.
Potentially.
Potentially, depending on the location of the shed.
Right, and the condition of the shed.
Unless it turns into a hoard, you know, we've seen the hoard show before. So you can have stuff behind the fence and then that that exists currently at those two blue homes. There's not only stuff that you can visibly see. There is accumulations of stuff behind the fences, which also represents a hazard.
Yeah.
And stagnant water and sharp objects for children living in in the vicinity. So sometimes we may have to clarify on storing things even behind fences. Because it's done all the time in in other municipalities.
Any other comments or thoughts on uh? This this item?
I would just like to say that, you know, from what I've read here. Well, first of all, let me ask, like, with the listings that you read, are a majority of the findings that you found on what side of the road? What area? Is it all over?
Probably the worst overgrown lot we have is in Butterfly Meadows.
And what about the dilapidated houses?
Most of them are in areas that are frequent flood areas, but they're also down northwest of a road, and I think there's one or two off of highway eighty.
And so, I mean, like where where I'm trying to to be at, it's like, I would hope that with this, that we as a city would also be able to list organizations that would be able to help people. A majority of the time, what they do is people cannot. You know, get out of this this stuff because of, you know, money issues or, you know, due to.
Uh, also, I'd like to, you know, we have the the potential of the. You know, garbage come, the garbage pickup three times a year or even more.
Or like just.
And and with sometimes they need help getting stuff out there on the side of the.
Or like there's Bobcat build or there's something.
Yeah, we're 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 working on. We we're we have, right now, it's on a Word document where we have a lot of the Bobcat build and some others. It even even things related to, you know, FHA loans and stuff that people might qualify for to to renovate their homes. So we're we're working on that. I know um person Pam, or she's she's done, she's spent about a good week researching that. So we have we have some information. I was surprised at how little actually existed though.
Something stated in in the ordinance to that the city. Well, it to see the city for uh options for to for potential sort of something to help or help.
Because that's part of the notice.
It's like there's a administrative fee, the charge for the work that's going to be done, the charge for the municipal, you know, judge. Everything like incurred fee, which is understandable. And I I mean, I get it. But like a majority of times, the people that are being impacted by this are people that aren't as, you know, well off as. Some that can. I mean, maybe the people in the blue house that it that those are their possessions, you know, but they do care about that stuff. So. You know, it might be ugly to see, but that's their stuff.
Well, and a lot of people collect metals and turn them in.
So that's that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, one of the things I've talked with the staff about when we're going in this is I'll make sure we're not. Criminalizing. Being poor. And we're not, we're not going after. Hurting peo- hurting hurting people more than than we need to. The when we're looking at the buildings and things, the biggest concern is. Are we hurting them more by allowing those buildings to continue in that state? Especially if they're um unoccupied, falling down, and if somebody goes in there could potentially become injured or or what have you, or they want to. If a flood comes through, is it going to create more property damage? In that case, those are, there's a clear.
And rodents.
Yeah, rodents, disease, all all that stuff. So. Want to focus on. Making sure we're making those better, not just hurting hurting.
So you're just kind of cut coming up with our ideas and to.
So this 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 is. Yeah, this is a uh up for review. There's a couple of changes we've we've noted that might be needed. And um we've kind of gone through the the weeds. Unintended on this one. Um, and then the the other sections talk about uh maintenance. This is the roadside maintenance. This was a a more recent ordinance that was passed. Where. People have to maintain. Their brush and trees are extending into the roadway.
Uh, thought we addressed that. Don't we have somebody that comes in and does that for the city? It gets in the roadway.
We did it the first time, and then after that, it was supposed to be the homeowner's responsibility. So now, since we've done it before, it's kind of like grown out again. But I think now it's just a matter of like letting people know. before, it's kind of like grown out again. But I think now it's just a matter of, like, letting people know that it's.
This, this was, this was, this was a conversation we had in the, in the budget setting and, um, previous meetings of, we had a continuing practice of the city taking care of some sections of the roadway, not others. And. At the time, City Council, you, you mentioned, you, you with the current practice.
Yeah.
And maintaining, city maintaining those roadways. Those, um, right over next, next to the road.
That was my understanding.
But our ordinance puts that responsibility on the property.
And, and sometimes it might require a conversation, like the Harrison's property on that escur, we went ahead and had, uh, Cody cut down some limbs to make and cut enough grass to make it so that it's visible and it's not as much of a, a hazard driving around that corner where it's already so much of a hazard because of the mud. It fills up like a lake in there whenever it rains. And so we tried to do a little bit of that, but we know that the family, Ms. Harrison, is in a home. And so her daughter probably doesn't understand that they're supposed to be mowing that. So it probably just.
So isn't that where, isn't that where, when we have, you know, spent our taxpayers' monies to, to, to cut everything back as a, in essence, a launching service, if you will, isn't, isn't this where it falls in line for either us as a city to write a letter specifically to the property owner in the situation where you know that the property owner is not going to be the one to receive the letter, then you send it to the next of kin, I guess? And then through an education type of way, and/or if, um, if a resident has a neighbor who has limbs that are obstructing the roadway, you know, residents need to know that they can go to the city's web, website. Is, is that would, would be the proper, proper protocol would be to file a complaint about that? How would a resident go about it? Jared?
Yeah, it would likely be through the complaint process that we discover it. Or our police officer would encounter some encumbrance trying to get through, or the fire department would let us know we got a, um, bush or something that's low hanging, or a tree that's low hanging, so.
And so then if a complaint were filed, if a complaint were filed and, you know, say it was for, um, you know, whatever address, just because it was a neighbor or anybody in random that filed the complaint, the letter would be sent from the city. Is that, is that correct? Because people don't want, people are not going to file a complaint if in fact they think their name's going to be tagged to it. So I think that's important for us to address out loud to, to give, because all, all in all, everybody wants things to look nicer. And so, but it's like, who do you tell and, and what are they going to do about it? And how is it going to backlash, how's it going to backlash on me?
I- isn't that already written in nine, in ninety-one point one seven?
Yeah.
Notice to correct prohibited conditions.
Yep, on the, on the weeds portion, he has one seven, and on the, uh, roadside maintenance, it's, uh, ninety-one dot twenty-two.
Oh.
Ninety-one.
They follow a similar, they follow a similar process, the same.
So it's kind of the same.
Yeah, but I just, I just wanted to speak it out loud for, you know, for the record and for others to hear, since they do not have the document that we do.
Um, I want to make a comment about this, though. We have this or ordinance and it's been in effect. Um, what has actually been preventing us from enforcing this? We have perpetual, uh, damaged buildings, debris, brush. I mean, I know on our side, we have a personnel that's limited to the timeframes in which they can, uh, enact these things. And it, and from what I see, it takes several steps of, of investigating, of research, of documentation, of posting signs. I mean, why haven't we been doing this the last twenty years? I mean.
And more, there's been more of this, uh, that has been taken care of over the years. Different mayors have considered this type of, uh, overall city cleanup as, as part of their, you know, their personal, um, item that they want to address. Sometimes council members have been the ones who they want to address this particular item. So it has been done. I've served under, um, eight mayors. And I have seen some, some that don't do anything about it and some that do a lot.
Well, the, the citywide cleanup, I, I can make a, a great comment on that, but dilapidated structures has, has persisted and is chronic and, and, and I personally don't think we have the, uh, personnel and the personnel needs to be brought up and educated about this in, in order to enforce this, but we, we see how it's, it's stretched thin on enforcing these things. And so it's going to take a lot to, to get this going.
And, and it doesn't necessarily have to be an elected official or a staff member. It can be, uh, anybody.
Well, anybody can file a complaint.
But the city must have a letter.
Yeah. So, so the reason why this is getting renewed attention is we went through a, a deliberate envisioned Martindale twenty twenty-five strategic planning process. Number two priority of that was maintaining community. And the top thing within maintaining community was expand the enforcement of city codes regarding public animal control, public nuisance. So really, this is, this is getting towards achieving that strategic vision that the residents wanted. That's why we're, we're working on it. You're right. The part of the, we saw with the weeds control issue, our current ordinance right now has you send it, send a letter and a year later, you take action on it unless it gets to such an extent that's forty-eight inches tall, and then you, you know, and we can remediate it ourselves. That's part of, that's an efficiency that we could get on this. The, in our officers and employees ordinance, chapter thirty-one, code enforcement is assigned to the chief of police as, as its duty. It's, it, when you're looking at, all right, which enforcement do you want to do? Traffic enforcement, code enforcement, these, these, we, we should be able to do all of them. What I've done recently is we've, we're using some of our internal staffing to increase a, an additional day where they can dedicate to this specific issue of code enforcement. And that's why, um, we're starting to catalog these things. We're, we're going to be working with, with our legal counsel to get those engineering assessments done, take legal action on
Structures.
On the weeds thing, there's efficiencies that we can gain. It's a, it's a matter of sticktutiveness and having continuity. There's not, hasn't been a lot of continuity, hasn't been a lot of sticktutiveness you know, on this issue. And so that rang out, loudest and clearest, roads number one, number two, and number three, but sure enough, three B was clean up this dang city, get this place looking better.
I commend you for that response. Thank you.
I kind of have a problem with the, you know, if somebody came to my door and it was a staff member in Harry, not somebody that kind of wasn't, that had been through, like, I don't know, uh, to be a building code enforcer.
So we do not have a, we used to have a code enforcement official who was, was certified under, I think it's occupations code or what, what have you. Where they could, they're licensed, they'll do that. We do not have that currently, but what we do have is staff who's doing the legwork of driving around the city, taking, taking note of what requires additional investigation and then referring that to the police department with, hey, here's who's the owner, here's the letters, go ahead and serve the citation. Doing some of that, lessening some of that.
Yeah, but it's the, it's a city staffer or an elected official that's doing that and not somebody that's officially trained to do it. So I kind of have a problem with that.
It'd be difficult to hire at this level, this city.
Yes.
Jared took some important issue and.
The guy had multiple.
So, so there's two things. A code enforcement officer is, uh, it's a position that exists by virtue of the occupations code. And so a code enforcement officer can assist the city in enforcing its code of ordinance. Generally, the things that they deal with are the building code. If you want to be a code enforcement officer, it's defined under the occupation code. You must take a class, get all that building knowledge, and then carry it forth into the community that you work for. One can, a city can have any number of people enforce codes, but you may not call yourself a code enforcement officer unless you're licensed under the occupation code. And it is a very common thing for non-code enforcement officers to enforce ordinances that don't relate to building standards.
And that's currently what we have.
And that's currently what, so we're, we're, we're doing something that's very common. It, it's completely okay. It's very, I mean, because it, it doesn't, it doesn't take getting a code enforcement certification to measure a fence and say, hey, that's twelve feet tall and you can't have a twelve-foot tall fence, or your grass is too tall, or all of, all of those different things. It's very common. Now, whenever, whenever the city has an issue that requires the expertise of an engineer or, or someone that needs to inspect a building, they're, they're brought on board and, and they handle that.
So as long as we have something in writing with the engineering.
So any, so, so we wouldn't necessarily, we wouldn't necessarily need the engineer to, to say the grass is too tall, obviously. But if, if it's dealing with buildings.
Dilapidated building. You'd have to have an engineer.
Okay.
We did, and we would, if not an engineer, we would at least have our building inspector.
Hey, something so obvious that half the roofs fallen and.
Mike, Mike, that's what I was mentioning earlier. Those are people that would have direct contact with me because i- if, if, if the city, like the building across the street, when we, you know, there were seven years of communication and nothing happened.
Right.
At a certain point, you, you bring on, onboard an engineer that inspects the building and determine if it's dangerous to dilapidate and be unprepared. In fact, they do, then they issue a report and that report is part of litigation that ensues. Nothing's going to happen with a, an actual building structure being determined to be dangerous or improperly constructed or otherwise in violation of some building code without an actual professional. That's an expert in those areas, looking at the property and determining. But all of these other things, all, all we have to do is send a notice of violation and get these folks set up to come to municipal court. And when, when we do the traffic pickets, you know, that, you know, that tells someone, listen, you got, you got to cut your grass, you got to get the stuff out of your front yard, or and your fence can't be that tall. Those are things that can all easily be handled with staff and through the court.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a process.
All right. If I could just say, I would like to table this so we have enough time to like go do homework and read through it and then email him suggestions rather than going through one by one at a time. Because if it took us this long to get through.
Well, this is under discussion only.
Yeah. So we could like go through.
We're not going to take any.
We don't have to go through everyone.
Maybe we can make, make notes.
Be continued.
Drop it off. And how about this? We can make notes and then drop it off the office.
And did you want to address, uh, chapter one fifty?
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring that up quickly because it's, it's only a paragraph.
Well, could, could we just look at the junk car, car one?
Unoccupied buildings, I think, are important.
There was a motion, but we haven't had a second yet.
Yeah, we're still kind of discussing.
This is only discussion, so this was not an action item.
Yeah, all we are is tabling it to, I think we ought to, not just homework, I still think we need to discuss them too.
Yeah, this is.
Yeah, uh, the junked, yeah, and we're not making any, uh, concrete determinations or action items on this discussion. It's, it's a discussion that has been brought up and we're discussing it. And I know it seems time consuming, but this is something that is important to the city and we have not discussed this.
It is. But I would also like to interject, it would have been nice if we would have had this before so we could have done the homework to come prepared with questions rather than just coming up with questions on the fly to better inform ourselves.
Well, we'll, we'll try and get it out a lot sooner.
There's, there's nothing that was changed. All, all I did was download the ordinance in a, in a, in a, uh, Word document so we could edit it if we needed to tonight.
That's what we're doing, but pretty much doing.
The only thing I wanted to mention about the junk car ordinance is that it says that they're visible from the road. Uh, where's that about the distance of where they're visible, public? Yeah, because we have some cars, say, close to a, where two corners meet that is close to a church where some cars are sitting and you could see them from a distance from the road, but those cars have been sitting there for probably fifty years. And there's several of them there and some of us might know where this is, but these cars have been sitting there for at least fifty years. There's a canoe there, there's, there's, there's cars. And so we need to have some other discretion about that.
Well.
That's exactly what this would be, that's exactly what this would be a violation.
Old junk cars, classics.
They've been sitting there for fifty years.
If there's no more paint on them, if they're all rust colored.
But yeah, they, they've been there a long time. That, that, that's all I have.
Called potato, man.
Uh, no, I kind of agree with, uh, with, uh, Sonia that we go ahead and let's table this, spend a little bit more time on the next meeting. Uh, and, and I think it's good that we got to go through one, one-on-one, but let's do our homework.
Well, this was the starting of a discussion, because it is under discussion only.
Is there anything you want to, you, you got bullet points you want to, you want to address, right?
No, I just want to say make sure, um, you also take a look at the fifty-one.
One fifty-one.
Demolition, demolition by neglect description. That's within our historic district.
But, by the way, that, that generally falls under when, when we, when we handled this before, we did it under chapter fifty-four of the local government code, which really does provide a very clear roadmap on that anyway.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's all I had, had to add on that. All right.
Okay. I wondered about scheduling.
We had a motion.
No, it's only discussion.
Oh, okay.
It's only discussion. I just wanted y'all to think about when do we want to have a citywide plan? And we just put it under discussion because it's nothing we had to decide on. There's no time limit on it. I just wondered about. We had one in April and we get one a year, is my understanding.
Well, we used to have two. We used to have, uh, one spring, April, March, right around there, and then we started doing like October, right around there.
But I think, but, but Dewayne, by contract, TDS gives us one where we don't have, the city doesn't have to pay for the dumpsters. Is that correct?
Mayor, if I may, um, this is, this is the point where we need to remind our residents that as per our TDS contract, that is correct, we do have one citywide cleanup a year, but we also have, every single resident has the ability to call TDS directly and request a, what is called a bulky clean, a bulky pickup. And also for the record, I, I spoke, I spoke with the office staff a week or a couple of weeks ago about it in, in hopes that it would maybe get put into our, our billing, giving, giving residents the phone number to call and a description of what exactly that can be put on the curb per se. And it's three cubic feet or three cubic, it's about the size of a refrigerator or a, um, you know, a couch.
And box springs.
You can do a mattress and box springs, that is correct. But the, to me, was important information to know, is that you can't just call and request that it be picked up any given day. Literally, TDS does bulky pickups on the first and third Wednesday of the month, and when they are, and those are not recycling weeks. So if it's a recycling week, they're not gonna do a bulky pickup. But if it is, if it's not, then they, then they would. But it has to be pre-arranged, directly with TDS.
I think that's a good suggestion.
That is a good suggestion.
I think it should be in the letter, maybe in small print, every month.
Every month.
Completely. The service, people are paying for this service and not using it. And I do believe that back in 19, or whenever we re-upped our, our contract with TDS, I did request from TDS how many residents had taken advantage of the bulky pickup in the previous 12 months. And literally, it was one or zero, I mean, it was like nothing. And so that's a waste of our residents' money, and I think if people understood and knew that they could schedule that, they would take advantage of it.
They can also do brush, right?
I don't know.
But I will tell you, you know, staff can contact TDS, and they have marketing materials that'll give this information that we can put into the, you know.
Yeah, we need to, might want to put like a link in there.
You work with me on that, we'll get it in the next billing.
Hey, Lisa, this is Vialobos, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If the city wanted to coordinate, since they're already doing the bulk pickup, like a citywide bulk pickup, would TDS be able to arrange that, like for, for the city? Like, all residents, put your stuff out on the third Wednesday of the month?
Remember, I asked that type of question? And each, each resident still has to rearrange it. But we, as a city, could publicize or, and/or promote, this is the week that we're in cur, you know, this is the day, because we know it's the correct day that TDS will do it. We can encourage people to do, to call the number and have their stuff out there that day. We absolutely can, and I think we should.
And can they do it every, like, every month that they do it? Or is it only a certain number of?
A year.
Residents. Here.
Are eligible to do it twice. Sorry?
I thought it was three a year.
No, ma'am, it's twice a year.
Twice a year, per resident.
Oh.
Okay.
I thought it was more than that.
We should, we should.
I have. Has anybody else used it?
I've never used it.
I have used it. And as we're talking about, we're talking about the citywide cleanup and how we have already done one for this year in April, I would like to recommend that we move forward with doing a bulky pickup and promoting it as such for residents to call in October, which is when we, when we used to do another citywide cleanup, so let's do it in October.
Okay, let's work on that. That's a good suggestion. We can do that, we'll put it in the utility building.
Yeah, and, and just make sure with the citywide cleanup that there's clarification that they cannot bring brush, because this last one, people brought a lot of brush, and that filled up the dumpsters.
It'd be at their home.
We're not gonna do it down here.
Oh, so we aren't gonna do a citywide cleanup, okay.
We'll probably do that in the spring.
Everybody try to call somebody in October.
So, does the council want to try and do a citywide cleanup in the spring? Is that what y'all are saying?
Yeah, but I, I would not, I would not nail down a date until we get closer, until we get to January.
Okay.
Cool weather.
Okay, so we'll work on this and get it in the next billing. Okay, so the, then the last thing I was thinking about is kind of funny to me right now, because it sounded like a really good idea when I was thinking about it, was like having brush brought to where we had the dumpsters and having the firemen burn it. Well, they didn't really like that idea at all. Yeah, they said, boy, that could get out of control real fast if it was a big fire. So, they did say if residents wanted, and the city wanted to allow residents to use that area, where we could do smaller contained fires, they could do a couple of fires at a time, and they would stand by with the fire trucks and the water to make sure that the fires didn't get out of control. So after talking to the firemen, I would suggest that we don't do that. Because their suggestions, it didn't sound like it was a doable thing.
Well, I mean, would they be willing to burn off the piles that the city already has? The city's own brush piles?
At least, we've done that before.
Yeah.
I mean, not necessarily opening up to everybody else, but there's, yeah, we've had brush piles there for about.
Yeah. I think that they probably would, after the season is over.
Well, at a perfect time, right now, we've had a lot of rain, perfect time to burn.
It's just that they're so busy on the river right now, they don't have any air for time.
Well, we still have, as you mentioned, brush that is from the 2015 flood that is in the triangle, right where we have the dumpsters, but between where the triangles are.
Oh, that was from the 2015.
And the property line, we have stacks of debris that is still there from the 2015 flood. When we burned it, and after the cleanup, we had to ensure that the fires were out by the end of the day. And what happened is when we put all those fires out, it created a lot of smoke, and so everyone down in Bella Vista complained about, or, or brought it to our attention about the increase of smoke. And so, I, I think something that possibly might work is, is contract with somebody that has a huge chipper and pay someone that has a chipper.
Most of the.
They did that, they did do that.
Most of those piles are dropped.
And they, what was supposed to happen is people were supposed to be able to pick it up and, and put it mulch in their gardens, and I tried to do it, and I couldn't use it.
Jared's got a good point, you know, maybe, maybe we could, maybe after the tubing season, maybe they could do that while it's still wet, green enough, they could burn it.
They won't do it for us if there's people that want to burn.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying what Jared's saying about the existing.
I thought they were volunteer firemen.
We're gonna have little bitty barbecues or something.
Don't they need practice?
You go have campfires.
Watermen, then?
They need practice, right, they need practice, and it's a good time of year.
Training, yeah, if they're training people. Say, hey, we got a big fire over here, you can make.
Ask, we can ask, but. Okay, we'll move on to future items. So of course, we still have the budget public hearing, the hotel motel tax workshop, we haven't forgot about that. The golf cart, there's several ordinances we have to work on. The golf cart ordinance, we'll have to do that in the workshop. Rolling review of different ordinances, 155, this one we were talking about tonight. 91, we can add to this list.
Now, 155 is, we're, we're talking about 151.
Well, I'm looking at my list here.
Okay.
And 155 is one that we've been working on, that's the land use. Officers and employees, chapter 31. Automobile parking, we never have gotten back to the.
That was, that was basically taking the 1984 language and updating it.
Can I, can I make a suggestion on this?
Sure.
On, on these ordinances? If, if we can, you know, for the next two, three months, set one of these for each meeting, I can work on cranking out a draft with Jared's help, and we can present a final version per meeting, subject to the council's input and review, because a lot of what we're doing at this point is.
We don't want to just spin.
Well, yeah, and, and, and the best success that I've had with, with this council and other councils in getting ordinances passed is to have a draft ready that, that we can walk through. And if, if we want to pick one for the, the meeting coming up later this month, whatever it is you want, say, let's have it ready. We, we can get it ready and have it presented, and then have one, you know, two weeks later, or four weeks later, on whatever schedule we want to follow.
But I think this nuisance one, I think we need to email, I guess Jared with the, and the mayor, with our suggestions, and then maybe come up with a draft. I feel like we need to discuss the issues, this ordinance.
So which one do you, does the council want it to work on?
And can Jared and Mayor, can, am I, am I on, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, everyone was kicked off of the Zoom call, and so I, I'm on a, I'm on my phone now, and I'm not able to get reconnected, I just want to make sure I could be heard, I do have input.
Yep, we got you.
Okay, great. And, and we're specifically talking about future agenda items?
Yes.
Okay.
We were specifically talking about the nuisance one, that we were, you know, Kent wants to be able to come up with some kind of a draft of the changes in the ordinance, so that we're, we can vote on them, so we can get something done with the changes on these ordinances.
I'd say the nuisance one is critical.
Yeah, I think we need to continue with the nuisance one.
What, and, and again, I mean, a lot of this is state code-driven. What I would say is if everyone wants to provide input on that, probably could not be ready for the second meeting this month. But if you would like to look at having a draft of either the officers and employees or the golf cart ordinance by the next meeting, we can have a draft ready that you will be able to look at, and then, and then ask questions, talk about it, and then, and then if any, any changes need to be made, we can make them and present a final draft at the subsequent meeting. So, if, however you want to pick it, then you let us know what you want ready for the next meeting.
So how about, how about you send us a draft, we can put our notes in there before you.
Sure, well, we don't have an ordinance on golf carts.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
But I'm not sure we need one.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that he could send a draft, and we could make our notes be, be an email, and he could put those, our comments in there and discuss it ahead of time, that could speed it up, that could speed it up.
So, so what I'll do, unless there's some objection, is work with Jared and Mayor Proctina Vialobos, and we'll get a draft of the golf cart ordinance ready for the next meeting. Excuse me, so that we can start asking some of these. I'm sorry.
Nothing.
Okay.
Well, it's just that you had said something to me that we have to have an ordinance, and I don't believe we have to have an ordinance for golf carts. We can use what's already written, what's on state laws. So in other words, from what I understood, you were saying that with, that we, if we don't have an ordinance, we can't follow the state laws.
No, most of the communities that allow golf carts on their streets have an ordinance.
There is already an ordinance that you can have a golf cart on streets that are under.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five miles an hour.
Yes, but my, my reading, and the reason I think it's important, because my reading of the transportation code says that cities may allow the use of, of golf carts. And so essentially what it is, is it, it is a permissive act that can happen subject to the city's allowance of that permissive act.
So they can have, unless we want to ban it.
No, no, no.
I don't see any reason why we have to.
No, I'm, I'm, what I'm saying, I agree with Bud here. You write, y'all guys write a draft, we can make our comments in there, maybe delete this or add this, your personal point, and then we can discuss it for next, for the next meeting. We could, you could put a draft, and then we could, we could modify it.
I didn't say anything, you're right.
It can, it can be if you want, it's, it's not that common.
Especially if council wants to get it ahead of time.
That's, I mean, it's two weeks away, so we can, we can get.
Because we've done that before.
I have a, I have a, I have a suggestion. This is Lisa.
Okay, Lisa, we're listening.
Yes, ma'am, where we have it listed, the hotel motel tax workshop, I have been working on helping to identify local Airbnb's, and so I would like to be able to give that information in order for us to discuss, not just identifying, but guidance for compliance. So I would like that to be on the agenda, please.
Okay.
Yeah, Lisa, I, I think that's a good timing on that, because we are going through the summertime now, and that's when we're seeing more usage of all of these Airbnb's, so it would be perhaps.
Correct. Another, another thing that I wanted, another thing that I wanted to bring up is that, and just for to be considered, typically, when we have a holiday on a Monday, especially when it falls on the first Monday of the month, we have, in the past, we've postponed our meeting to the second Tuesday of the month. I just wanted to bring that up in case that needs to be addressed or considered, be it, I believe we would have to vote on that. So if, in fact, that needs to be addressed, then that may need to be on the agenda for next, next, next meeting.
I would, I would agree on that one, because usually I take a holiday.
Another, I have another item, I have another item, which is really a question in that, in hopes that it can be addressed. This council, under the direction of Mayor Rob Devini, approved to move forward with a Lockhart Street repair project. And so I've not heard anything about it, and I just want to make certain that that does not get lost in the shuffle as we spent lots of time and energy.
Lisa, we're talking to the county, and they've got us on the list for the end of the summer. It's not a specific, but they couldn't get to our project till the end of the summer.
Okay, great, maybe that can be put in your report for next, next meeting. Another item that I would like to see on, as a future agenda item, and Jared had already discussed it, but I'd like for it to actually come up, the firm fixed price contract for mowing, so that all of our services are across the board, and we're not paying one, one amount for a service here and a different amount for a service in a different location.
I think that's a good suggestion, because we've been kicking that around for a while.
Yeah, so let's bring it up, and then also about what Sonia referenced in reference to the child safety program, I'd like to see that on, on the agenda for us to figure out a way to move forward with that.
Get through the future items.
Tell gone back then.
Tell gone, take it away. We're not laughing at you, Lisa.
Is this, which is the date on this, on this meeting?
The 17th.
What would be on the 17th agenda?
He was asking for a mayor's report on the Lockhart Street repair.
Oh, okay.
Asking about the mowing contract.
Okay.
And asking about the child safety program, more information on that.
I could do research on that and like present it to you, and help you out with that if you want me to.
Yeah, I, I'd start with what Prior Mayor Devini had put together as a starting point. I know he, he had looked at one of his mayor reports. All he has the references.
On the child safety stuff? Okay.
Oh, he did, he goes to something like that.
Yeah, I think it came up in the April, it's just a little bitty explanation.
It's just what it can go to, with the.
Can we use that, that 6,500 that we were talking about, is that?
Yeah, it's what, it's the use restriction.
And you know, if we're at the river, it could be either that, helmets, life jackets, you know, car seats, whatever.
Well, I think it was. Well, I think it was education too.
Yes.
You know, ask for that, for the handicap on the swing possibility.
Okay. So when's our next meeting?
One, I, well, I, I need one discussion and a- action item on the tree removal at Allen Bates Park, because that's a safety issue that has been mentioned by some of our residences, and, and I would like to get those trees removed as soon as possible, and by the end of the fiscal year.
That needs to be in a discussion action.
I have, we have received bids, so we have bids that we can present.
Bring the paperwork. Okay, I'll help you with that.
Uh, we've.
I've got one.
We've got one, and we've got another one in the works. We e- e- emailed another tree guy. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
He does not, he does not have to have three. I do not believe he has to have three. That is when a bid is for fifty thousand dollars or more.
Yes.
So two, two bids?
Yes, cause it's under, it's under.
Just something for us to choose from.
It's not a state law, but it's our purchase policy.
Okay.
No, these bids are less than three, three thousand dollars.
They're currently about two thousand two hundred dollars.
Yeah, let's just bring the paperwork next time, and we'll go, we'll discuss it.
Okay.
Okay.
We need to get those removed. We kick that can around too much.
Yes.
Okay, can I have a, um, a motion to resign, uh?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
That's it. Go ahead.
One second. Okay, we have a motion, uh, to adjourn in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you all.